Redevelopment Agency Meeting. Will you rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two on the agenda are changes to the order of agenda. I would like to suggest one change, that item 10A be added or follow item 8B. And I'd also like to just make a note for the audience that since we're short of members tonight, we have three members instead of our normal five, we will not be able to enact these zoning ordinances tonight. We will hear you, we will hear the public, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll continue it until our meeting later on in the month. So, don't leave, we'd like to hear from you, and it's not necessary for you to come back at a later date, but we will not be able to take final action on these ordinances tonight. So with that in mind, are there any other changes to the order of agenda? Staff?
We have none.
Council? You're all set? All right. Then we'll proceed with item number three, which is a report from closed session. The city attorney, Mr. Landzone?
Nothing to report from closed session, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Item number four, council communications and announcements. First item that we have listed is consideration of future discussion for library drop boxes. I mentioned that a couple of years ago, we considered the library drop box. At the request of John Hoffman, he did a considerable amount of outreach to patrons of the library, and he delivered signatures of a good number of people who would like to see a drop box. In the process of discussing it amongst the council, we kind of went on both sides of the fence. There is some cost involved, there's ongoing cost involved, and we were a little questioning whether the library had the staff to do it, really wanted to do it. And the bottom line was that we had a meeting, there were four members here, two members voted for continuing the discussion, and two members voted against. So Mr. Hoffman has raised the issue again. I have talked to some of the folks at the library, and reviewed some of the libraries myself as to how they operate, and it seems to me that it's appropriate that we schedule this for a formal discussion. And that would be my request on the part of the council. Any question on that, Councilmember Grokot or Griselli?
No questions, and I am in agreement with the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have no trouble discussing any of these items.
All right. Then why don't we schedule this for future review? We'll put it on one of our agendas as soon as possible. I notice there's information from the library with us tonight, and I'm sure that Mr. Hoffman will deliver information on his own. We'll ask staff to look over the information and submit a staff report after we complete that process. So, Mr. Hoffman, having just walked in, we've completed your issue, thank you, and we will continue this matter to a later date and have formal discussion on your request. Would that be all right? Would you like to say something?
Thank you.
All right. Come on, Laurie.
I'll just be very brief. Mayor David, councilman, I believe you have in front of you some papers like so, which are signatures from people who said they'd like to see a drop box, and also, wait till my music stops, a letter from the post office saying how useful their drop box is, and finally, a paper from library managers, or comments from library managers who in fact have drop boxes, and say that their life would be at risk were they to remove them. It's very popular with the patrons, and I would ask you to take a look at this prior to the discussion, and I think this demonstrates fairly conclusively that people here in San Carlos, patrons of our library, would also like to have.
Okay. And thank you very much. And as I mentioned, we'll refer all this information to staff, they will do a staff report for us, return it back on an agenda as soon as possible. Thank you. Moving to the next item, which is item B, report on the San Carlos-Belmont Fire Department Joint Powers Agreement. Doug, are you going to report, or one of the council members?
I'll report to the council members.
Okay.
Matt or Bob?
Sure. Well, folks will remember, we did, just to give a brief history, we did have our assessment attempt back in November 2006, which did not pass, and in December, we authorized the Fire Commission members, Bob and I, to negotiate a new updated JPA agreement, which included a six-month rolling notice of dissolution to end June 30th, 2007, should either San Carlos or Belmont choose to do so. And then in January 2007, we reached an agreement of a funding formula based on four factors, equally weighted, 25 percent call volume, 25 percent assessed valuation of property within the two jurisdictions, 25 percent based on the fire stations slash companies that are in those two areas, and then 25 percent population. Also in January 2007, we did not reach a consensus regarding the PERS side fund amortization or the, what's called the GASP45, which in other terms is retiree medical. And so Chairperson, the new Chairperson of the Fire Board from Belmont, Chairperson Lieberman, established a two-person subcommittee to look at that issue. That was Commissioner Grisilli and Commissioner Mathewson from Belmont took a look at that. And then in February 2007, we had a meeting and a conference call with staff and PERS, the actuarial representatives regarding side fund options. In other words, we got in touch with PERS to find out how, what our options were with dealing with it. Could we deal with it separately as two agencies? Did we have to stay dealing with it as one fire department? What were our options in dealing with the PERS side fund? So that happened in February 2007, and essentially, the summary of that consultation with PERS was they did not want to make this any more complex than need be, and so they would rather keep it that it was, that they received payments simply from the Fire Department, not from two separate agencies. And then at our last meeting, we did have a resolution that was passed by the board three to one to have the funding formula, as it were, apply to all expenses of the Fire Department and all income. We get, as a fire department, for instance, we get money with our hazmat agreement, so we get money from the county and other agencies that are part of hazmat, to have the funding formula applied to the money that comes in. So that's a benefit to, you might say, to San Carlos, because we would get credit for that income in a way other than 50/50. And as a compromise to that, we also agreed to take the PERS side fund and the GASP side fund, or the outstanding liability, if you will, and pay those according to the funding formula. So there is a little give and take. The other part of that motion was that we would have the staff of the Fire Department that does finance model this for us before we take final action on it, so we can see what it looks like, what the ramifications are, because we did not have actual numbers in front of us when we made the motion and took a look at that in concept. So that's where we stand. Bob, would you like to add anything to that?
No, just as an aside, we started this, Councilman Grokot and myself came on, I guess, in December of 2005 into the Fire Board with two members of the Belmont City Council and their fire district, and I think we've worked well together over the last year and a quarter, year and a half. In December of 2006, two new members came on in Belmont, and we've worked well with those folks. I think there's a lot of, as Matt said, a lot of give and take on both sides. I think we've tried to come down to an agreement that can benefit both sides. The biggest benefit is to keep our Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department intact. I think it's, the improvement, at least in my mind, in the last 16 months has been very good, from the staff retention, to morale, to responses, to staffing with our new chief, Doug Fry, and new battalion chiefs. I think we're on a real positive swing. I think after we get this modeling back on March 28th, which is our next meeting, I firmly believe that in early April, we can have a joint powers agreement go to both city councils. Would you say the same thing?
Yes, I would.
And I would hope that both city councils would approve it, and this could be put behind us, so to speak. We won't be eliminating the Fire Board, but I think we will be in an area where now we can concentrate on making sure that the Fire Department remains strong and continues to improve, and perhaps get some of these other sidebar items behind us. So I think it's been a real positive thing, especially working with our contemporary, our friends in Belmont, and I'm hopeful that it's going to come to fruition here in about 30 to 40 days.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I wanted to ask the Fire Chief to come up and briefly give a report on a grant that we've been awarded. Also, they had a strategic planning seminar, retreat, like we have had as a council, if you could report on that, and I think that's about it, yeah.
One thing, too, Mr. Mayor and council members, as a reminder, all fees, too, that the Fire Department brings in will go back 100 percent to each city that originated those fees. For example, plan checks, those types of things, will come back into the San Carlos side of the budget, so that that would be reduced instead of being in the operating piece. So that's also a little bit of a change in that.
Just to be clear, Chief, what you're saying, then, is the fees are not weighted according to the formula, they just come in as they are allocated by each city?
Correct. That's correct. I do, I'm happy to report that we are the recipient of a grant from the federal government, the Assistance to the Firefighters Grant, for $177,000 to replace our entire breathing apparatus component for five companies, and actually, for eight companies. We're going to outline every piece of equipment with new breathing apparatus and spare bottles. This is something that we've been working on for the last year, and we were awarded this last Friday night, so we'll be moving forward in this grant, probably in the next fiscal year with that order and having everything placed to follow through with that. There's a matching piece for us that we'll be dealing with as, within the budget for next year. So that was the sole component of this application period that we applied for was a grant. As you remember, in '04, we applied for wildland safety gear, medical safety gear, and it covered all the physicals and a health care program for members within the department for exercising and workouts. So that fell under the 2004 grant that we just completed just last year. Also in January, as Mr. Grokot stated, we had a strategic planning meeting for the Fire Department. A lot of changes has happened in the department, as was stated. A whole new management staff has come in, a bunch of captains were promoted. We brought in Marilyn Snyder, the same person that did the strategic plan for the city of San Carlos, came in and spent the day with the management team and the fire captains, and developed a new mission statement for the Fire Department, a whole set of core values, and we're moving forward with some plans for the next three to five years, as far as some, building some committees and stabilizing policy procedures and how the department runs overall. So it was very well received by the department. We'll be meeting with her again in July to do the second phase and to move on with the vision. So we're looking forward to that. But you do have a terrific organization, a lot of hard work, and members that are working hard and staying committed, so thank you for your support.
Very good, Chief, thank you. Could you share the planning session results with us? I don't think I've seen a copy of that.
Yeah, I'll be happy to forward those to you.
Okay, wonderful. And Councilmembers Griselli and Grokot, thank you very much for your continued hard work and good report.
You're welcome.
We look forward to a happy ending after these months of effort. So let's move ahead on to the next item, which is the item 4C. It's a communication requesting consideration of a resolution supporting expansion and safety enhancement to transit service. You also have at the desk tonight an email that was submitted by a group calling themselves Members of the Coalition to Expand Transit Service. And just as a short background, I received this information last week, and spent some time talking to Malcolm Dudley in Atherton, who are former mayor and city council member in Atherton, and Malcolm advised me that he would like our council to consider this resolution, and in studying it and discussing it, we decided that tonight would not be an appropriate time to consider the resolution, but since we all have copies of it and since it's been in the press, it would be a good time to discuss it if you choose. There are some issues regarding the wherethes in the resolution that apparently have some debate, and we'd like to clarify those and give this a little additional thought before we bring it to the council for action. So that's a short summary of what we have. The information is interesting, is attached. Any questions from either of the council members on this issue?
I think it's a good course to take, to give us time to review it first.
Future discussion, yes. Okay. You okay with that, Bob?
I think, I think as long as we have a full discussion on all sides of the issue, I think it's great. I think it's difficult when you only get one side or the other side, whichever is presented to us on some of these resolutions, and I think as long as we have a full hearing of both sides, I think it's well planned out in the future.
Okay, very good. Then we'll put this aside until we have additional time to look it over, and bring it back at an appropriate time in the future. All right, are there any other announcements on the part of the council members at this point? Matt, do you want to go first?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to acknowledge a letter we received from the city of Belmont, from Councilmember Bill Dickinson, requesting that we consider the South Bay Waste Management Authorities Board the way it's established and composed of elected official, or not composed of elected officials at this time, it's completely composed of staff members, and they would like us to consider that, so perhaps we could also put this item on a future agenda at some point.
All right. Any objection to that, Councilmember Griselli? Then we'll sort her. Anything else?
I just.
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished, thank you.
I just wanted to mention that I attended a meeting of the City and County Association of Governments the other evening, C-CAG, and they gave a report on the new metering lights, which probably most of us have faced in some way or another, going southbound on Highway 101. They seem to feel, according to the surveys and statistics they took, that there is an advantage to the travel on the freeway. They feel like the times that they've charted out on their survey have improved it. I know there's some discussion about the roads leading to the freeway, whether that's improving that or not. They also indicated that the northbound meters will be coming on probably in the next few months. They don't, however, expect the northbound meters to be quite as positive for the traffic as the southbound meters were due to the fact of where the meters are going to be and where the traffic flows right now. But they're, we're continuing to look at that and try to improve the transportation in the county. As I think I mentioned last month, there is money now available to put a third or an extra lane in from Millbrae down to Highway 92, which is going to be starting hopefully in the next few months, and it'll be a longer process, it's not going to take five minutes to do, but again, hopefully, again, to alleviate some of the traffic that we have. That's all I had to say.
Very good. I'd like to just follow up with a couple of items that I think will interest you. One is the showing of the film, An Inconvenient Truth. This has been shown at various libraries in the county, and our library will have a showing on Wednesday, March 28 at 7:00. It's a free service, I believe, I don't see any indication of cost, so let's say it's free, and presumably it'll be in the upper room in the library.
Yes.
And it is a very interesting and thought-provoking film. If you haven't seen it, I would suggest that you take advantage of it and join with other members of the community to take a look at it. The other issue is an interesting thing that came out this morning, I found on the website. It turns out that we've had some graffiti problems on the industrial area, and apparently some of them have been fairly serious. And so our police department organized a surveillance of potential target areas, and Detective Tom Arenas set up an investigation or an inspection process, and was successful in nabbing six individuals who were in the process of spreading graffiti in the industrial area. We're glad to say that all six were booked into the San Antonio County Jail. One was a juvenile, he was booked in a juvenile hall, and as of the time of this writing, they were being held on $70,000 bail. So the price of graffiti goes up when you get caught, and hopefully, those who are inclined to spread graffiti in our community will take notice of the action that is ahead of these individuals. The property damage, incidentally, was somewhere between $20,000 and $50,000, and hopefully we'll be able to recover that as well in the process of pursuing with this prosecution. So compliments to the police department, Detective Arenas.
Give a little applause for our police department, Bob.
I think so. Our job well done. Okay, moving along, we are now at, hold on a minute, let's see, these papers are, oh, here we are, thank you. Report to council, we have a report from city staff on a demonstration of Silicon Valley Prospector System. Brian Moore.
See if we can wake up the computer. Basically, what we're going to try to show to you this evening is a website that is a joint project of the cities in Silicon Valley that are part of a group called the Silicon Valley Economic Development Directors Association, or also known as SVIDA. And one of the projects that we have talked about in San Carlos for a number of years is the possibility of putting together a map-based database of businesses in San Carlos, and also of listings of properties for sale or lease. And so what we've done with the help here, it is, of joint venture Silicon Valley and the SVIDA group, is put this together, and one of the interesting things that we've done is by partnering as a group of 20 agencies, we've been able to share the cost. So rather than each city spending roughly $30,000 apiece, we were able to put this together for a total cost of $70,000 spread among the agencies based on population. So for San Carlos, it represents a significant savings. Rather than spending $20,000 to $30,000, our cost was $1,100 this year, and will be $1,200 next year, which we think is a great deal. This will be formally unveiled next week on the 21st. Members of EDAC and the city council are invited to the formal event, but what we thought we'd do tonight is give you a sneak preview. As you see by looking at the screen, all you have to do to use the system is go to siliconvalleyprospector.com, that's one word. You can search by type of commercial building you're interested in, whether it's office, industrial, R&amp;D, et cetera. You can look at any of the participating cities that you see on the left corner, or you can also search on a specific city, and in this example, obviously, we're going to take a look and see what we can find in San Carlos. And what we're doing is we're working with the broker community, and to date, what we have in here is 13 properties that have been put in by brokers that are active in San Carlos. And right now, I think Cornish &amp; Carey is the one broker where all the properties are listed. I'm told that in the coming days, we will have listings by other brokers. It's also worth noting that, here's the list from San Carlos, and you can see there's roughly 14 properties in there, and as you can see, they're listed by address, type of business, size, whether it's a sale or lease, and as you scroll up, it shows you on the photo map where in San Carlos these are located. And also, what you can do as you go through the system, is you can get more detailed information. For example, on the next screen, you'll see a picture, this happens to be 735 Industrial Road, which is available for a lease office. There are some additional pictures you can click on on the website, get more information, and then it also has information on the broker, et cetera. Another thing that we have on here are what's called the demographic report, where you can actually do research on the site. This shows you a one-mile circle around 735 Industrial, and so if you were out of the area, if you were a facilities manager from, say, Southern California or the East Coast, you weren't that familiar with San Carlos, by looking up, you could see some of the key demographics within one-mile area. You'd notice, for example, that the area is 46 percent male, 53 percent female. You could see that 85 percent of the population is under 60 years old. You could see a breakdown by race, by income, et cetera. And then also, on this site, you can also get a listing of the surrounding uses. This is the dot map that shows you that, and then below that, you can see the businesses by type. So you can see that in this area, there's a significant concentration of professional businesses, high tech, other services, et cetera. Initially, as I said, we'll be marketing this to the broker community, and then what we will be doing is working with individual property owners, because on the right-hand, the left-hand side of the screen, we actually allow individuals to create a free password and to put in their own properties. And again, what we're trying to do is create a searchable database for facility managers, both in this area and around the country, that if they want to open a business in Silicon Valley, they can dial up the listings of any of these participating cities, including San Carlos, and find out what's available on the market. And we think that this is going to help turnover businesses quicker. It's obviously a great asset to anybody in town who owns property or leases property of a commercial or technology nature, and we're real excited about the project. It's something, as I said, we've talked about for a couple of years now, teaming up with a vendor of this type, and this presents an unusual opportunity for the city in that we're able to get a website of this type for a bargain basement price, basically. So that's Silicon Valley Prospector in a nutshell, and we will have links to this from the city website later this week.
Very good, thank you. Questions for Brian?
I have one question, that is, from this website, can you then, let's say you were looking at a building, and then you wanted to be able to make a quick contact with, say, Al or Liz, because you wanted to know things about planning issues or building apartment issues or so forth. Is there a way to do that from this website?
I don't think we've done that yet, but that's a good suggest. Excuse me, we could do that, yes.
Okay.
Well, Brian, thank you very much.
Welcome.
It's great, looks like you're a great service, and I'm sure that our property owners and brokers will find it most useful.
Great.
Now, while you're up, would you like to tell us about the San Carlos Economic Development Survey?
Yes, Mayor. One of the projects that we're working on is an economic development plan in the city, and starting today, we are circulating an economic development survey. We've brought printed copies over here on the podium next to the speaker cards tonight for people who are in attendance. They can fill out the survey and then turn it in, and we'll put it in our collection box. This goes to RSG, our consultant. We'll be surveying the community for roughly two to three weeks. The questions here are basically, what kind of businesses would you like to see in San Carlos and in different parts of town? This is an extension of the work we did late last month at our Economic Development Public Workshop, and this will all go into our final report, which comes to EDAC in April, and then the council later April or early May. So, and we'll also have an online version of this later this week, so people who prefer to do it online versus in printed form, we'll have it both ways. But we're interested once again in hearing what the public in San Carlos thinks, what kinds of things they'd like to see more of and less of, and our consultants will tally the results and then report back to EDAC and then to the council.
Very good. And just to encourage the public again, this information's very important to us, so whether you do it at the city website, or whether you do it with a hard copy, you can pick up at City Hall or call, and we can mail one to you.
Right.
We certainly would like to hear from you and make your preferences a part of our economic development report.
Yes.
So thank you.
All right.
Okay, moving along, it's time for public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the post. Persons wishing to address the council on matters not on the posted agenda may do so at this time. Our limit is two minutes per speaker. And I have one card, Scott Marsters. Any others are welcome to come aboard after Scott and pass up a speaker slip. Scott?
Hi, my name is Scott Marsters, and I'm president of the L'Oriola Association. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about shuttles.
I'm sorry, what?
Hi?
I missed it.
Shuttles.
Shuttle.
Shuttles.
Thank you.
The first thing I want to say is, I ride a shuttle every day to work and back. I'm a big fan of shuttles. But I do believe that we have a problem with the shuttles on the east side. And we have worked over the last couple of years with city staff. We've worked with SAM Trains, JPB, Caltrain, and we've worked with the police department to solve some of these problems. Some of the problems are that the shuttles continue to use the residential streets as cut-throughs, and they're racing up and down the streets. They sit at the train station for longer than 10 minutes. They sit there with their engines running so that the patrons from the trains can get on nice, air-conditioned trains, I mean shuttles. And yet, we in the neighborhood get their smog. So as recently as last week, the police were over there. They put up the large signs asking the shuttles not to use the residential streets. Actually, they made the mistake of asking the shuttles not to use one particular street, so they moved to the streets on either side of that street. And so as I was coming here, I'm passing the shuttle coming down the street. What I'd like you to do is to help us find some more permanent solution to this problem, and whatever that may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Barbara Patterson?
I'm Barbara Patterson. I live in San Carlos. I had interest in two items that are active right now, and I was wondering if we're going to have a staff report or some report about the master drainage plan for the city of San Carlos. I think two consultants were going to be bidding that project. And I'd like to know if we could have an update on that.
It's not on the agenda tonight. I don't know the status of that. Mark, do you?
I believe that report will come back in April.
In April, okay.
I'd also like to request that that, the proposals be reviewed by the Fluke Committee, because their mission from the council is to review flooding, land use, and creek issues. And I think it'd be quite appropriate, because there will be a lot of interaction with the public and the community in the course of this, the completion of this project.
Okay. We'll take a look at that. I'm not sure how that is routed, but...
And one other question is the...excuse me. One other question is the search for the Assistant Public Works Director. Is that being completed?
I know that's in process. Mark, can you give us an update on that?
We've narrowed the list of candidates down, and so we'll be conducting interviews within the next 30 days or so.
All right, good. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. That's all the slips I have. Would anyone else like to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Good evening. I did turn in a slip. I guess you just didn't get it.
Well, you had marked for a certain item, Bob.
Uh-huh.
You had it marked for a certain item.
Yeah, is that going to be coming up later?
It'll be coming up.
Oh, okay. I'll address it then.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, moving ahead to item nine, which is under unfinished bit...
Seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, item seven. Consent calendar, there we go. Too many papers, yeah. Item seven is the approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate action on, or discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request that specific items be removed for a separate action. Councilmember Grocott.
Actually, I was going to pull item K, but I'll just make a note on it when we go to approve it.
All right, so we'll leave it on the consent item. Councilmember Griselli, any polls?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Hold on just a moment. I would like to pull item I.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
Item I, we have public comment on that later on. Staff, any polls?
We have none.
Or the public? Anyone would like to pull something off? Yes. I'm sorry?
H.
Item H? Oh, that's right. That's what I meant to mention. Thank you very much. It's not I, it's H.
I was going to say, I didn't think it was I.
Okay, so we'll pull item H, and the rest of them are ready for approval.
Then I'll make a motion to approve item seven, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, and K, please.
Is there a second?
I will second, and I just wanted to note that on item 7K, it is the fact that the San Carlos Little League and the Kiwanis Club of San Carlos will be helping us fund a scoreboard at Arguello Park. And I just thought it'd be duly noted so that we can thank them from the dais as a council for that funding effort. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's a very generous contribution on the part of the Kiwanis Club. So with that, we can have roll call.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Now we're ready for item eight, A, which is consideration of ordinance amendment to the San Carlos Municipal Code. Various sections involved amending Exception Design Control Committee and residential design review requirements within the city of San Carlos. Planning Director Liz Cullen will speak there.
Good evening, Mayor Davis. Members of the council, members of the community. Your staff reports outline the most recent year-long history of the review of the city's residential design review guidelines, so I won't get too much into those. And it also goes into prior review since 2004. There are a couple of key background items that I did want to point out to your attention, though. First, the November 6th Joint Planning Commission and Exception Design Control Committee study session, Exception Design Control Committee being the Residential Design Review Committee. And then, secondly, the city council meeting of November 13th, 2006, whereby the Planning Commission advised and the city council-directed staff to make a series of legislative and procedural changes to our residential design review process. The legislative changes that are proposed as part of your draft ordinance for consideration this evening include changing the name of the Exception Design Control Committee, or the EDCC, to reflect the difference in the review process, rather than indicating that projects exceeding the floor area are exceptions. Just a difference in the review process, again. Secondly, the clarification should be made to the code stating that staff is not a voting member of the committee. Third, that we should continue to strive for enhanced public notification processes, including improved content of applications, technological or visual measures, and site plans, including adjacent structures or uses. And finally, in terms of legislative changes, the Planning Commission, well, the city council-directed staff to exclude basements from floor area. In terms of procedural changes, and I'll get a little bit into how the Planning Commission shaped that last legislative recommendation. In terms of procedural changes, the key items are that the commission and the council agreed that there should be more time for the Residential Design Review Committee to review their items. They, the meetings have been held the same evening as the Planning Commission meetings, back-to-back, and I think members of the public have felt a little bit constrained in their time to comment on projects, and the committee constrained in their time to develop solutions. The committee has tried very hard to schedule a different evening, but has had difficulty. So in the alternative, they've elected to meet an hour earlier, and that has given them quite a bit more time. So it addresses the intention, but it's not exactly as directed by the council and the commission originally. Additionally, the commission and the council-directed staff to post action minutes from the committee, the results of the committee meetings, the following day on the city's website. In terms of, the staff has presented an ordinance to you reflecting all of the legislative changes, with the exception of one, and that is excluding basements from floor area. And what the Planning Commission advised in the alternative was to have the issue of basements or below-grade improvements that were not visible from the public right-of-way or neighboring properties be sort of an incentive for neighborhood compatibility. So it became an element in this draft of the design guidelines, and a way to have a positive vote from the Residential Design Review Committee. You'll note that I'm starting to use that term Residential Design Review Committee instead of the EDCC, just because I think it's more easily explainable to the community, and also because that's the name that we are proposing at this time. I'd like to draw your attention to a public comment letter that was received after preparation of our staff report from Sue Robinson, just expressing her continued interest in having further controls on larger homes, particularly larger homes on larger lots and smaller lot neighborhoods. With that, staff is recommending that the city council introduce the draft ordinance. We have included, one of the key items we've included in that is a requirement for enhanced visual simulations depicting neighborhood footprints. We're looking at window placement plans, that type of a thing. And we're actually already requiring those for the larger, more substantial projects, and that's been a great tool in analyzing new projects that are coming in. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Liz. Any questions for Liz?
I have a few, yes. I was a little confused to start off, because it seems like there's times that, and maybe it's because we don't have the whole ordinance in front of us or something, but, you know, we have 18.24.040 design guidelines. We see some things for the first time there. And then we get to 18.28.040. We get the same design guidelines again. And then we get to item C on page four. Okay, so it's section 18.104.085, and we see the same thing a third time. And I just don't understand why we have this ordinance that repeats things so many times.
Well, there are three residential sections in your zoning code. You've got single-family residential, you've got single-family residential low-density, and you've got planned-community residential. So each of those sections has development standards, and we wanted to make sure, we thought about having just one section on residential design review where it was common. But then you do a lot of sort of cross-checking, and that can be confusing to people that are trying to review our code.
Okay. The other item that I had a question on is, if you look on page two of the draft ordinance, towards the top, there's this word in the first sentence, after the comma, the word limitations. And I marked this, I highlighted it, Liz, and wrote in here, wrong word, because that's the whole thing that we're trying to get away from, even with, I thought, changing the name from EDCC. And this thing that we've talked about in the past, that we, with the way this thing's set up, we have to almost educate people that it's not a limitation. It's simply a management threshold. If you're over that threshold, you're going to go through this process, no questions asked. If you're under, it's left up to the planning director, or there's some other items here, like 2,500 square feet or 500 square foot, second story, and so forth. But it's not a limitation. And every time we use that word in the ordinance, we send the message that it is a limitation, when in fact it's not. And so I had questions on using that word.
I think that's a really good point, and I assume you're looking at 18.24.040.
Yes.
I, one, for example.
Yeah.
I think that's a good point of clarification with sort of the new theme of the regulations.
I'm not going to give you what the word is, but I just, you know, whatever you can come up with, I think it would be good.
Right.
And I don't, I read through this, but I may have missed if it's used someplace else.
Okay.
Bob?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to commend the Planning Commission and staff, and anybody else who, you know, had a chance to work on this, that I think it's overdue. I was on Planning Commission for six years, and on EDCC, I think, for almost all those six years. And I think there's some items in here, especially meeting on a different day. I know that sounds like perhaps a minuscule thing to many people, but it removes a time constraint that always existed, that shouldn't have for some of the building that goes on here. And other items here also that are very positive, I believe, about more research in some of these, some of these houses. But anyway, I just wanted to make, and I'm sure I'm parroting what other council members would say, but I just want to compliment the folks that spent the hours, and I know it was hours and hours, to work this out to make it the document it is.
Thank you. We'll pass that along to the Planning Commission.
It certainly is a good result. Do you have an operative word for limitations? Or would you like to consider that?
Well, probably what you could say is, all proposed residential construction, which would result in a floor area less than the threshold. I mean, it would be as simple as that, perhaps, to make a change, because really, we're talking about a threshold rather than a limitation.
Yeah. Certainly consistent with the words we use elsewhere, I think, yeah.
Okay. Very good. Well, with that, we have, this scheduled is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address us on this matter? To motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're ready for a motion. And note as you make the motion that we have two findings that are listed on the upper part of page six in our report. And we can refer to the findings as we introduce the motion for the ordinance.
I just had one question. I thought it was said earlier that because of our low numbers tonight, we were limited on what we could do with these public hearing items?
If all three vote in favor, then it would be, the ordinance can be introduced.
Okay.
You just have to have three out of five to move an ordinance forward. And I would comment, Mr. Mayor, that the findings that you referenced on page six are also contained in the ordinance. So if you just move to introduce the ordinance, the findings are in there.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would move to introduce ordinance number...
1384.
1384, which I'll just say includes the findings that support it on page five of the ordinance, as we have it in our draft.
Would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes. The ordinance of the city council, the city of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code's sections 18.24.040, 18.28.040, 18.104.085, and 18.116.135, for the purpose of amending Exception Design Control Committee residential design review requirements within the city of San Carlos.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. All right, that brings us to item eight, B. This is a consideration of extension of the interim zoning ordinance, requiring a conditional use permit for all new uses occupying tenant spaces of greater than 2,500 square feet within the 800 block of Laurel Street for 10 months and 15 days, which happens to be the legal limit of this type of ordinance, this type of interim ordinance. So, Al, welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. As the mayor noted earlier, this requires a four-fifths vote by state law. And the notice was sent out prior to us knowing that there wouldn't be a four-fifths of the council here this evening. And so what we would do is bring this back to the March 26th meeting, which would start here at City Hall at 7:00. And there was a couple of other items on that agenda, and then it would move over to the Hillard Museum at 8:00 for the PAF EIR consideration. But I'm going to go ahead and make a brief presentation on both this ordinance and the next item. And on February 12th, 2007, the city council adopted a 45-day interim ordinance requiring a conditional use permit for all uses occupying tenant spaces greater than 2,500 square feet in the 800 block of Laurel Street. And the intent of the 18, or the 10-month and 15-day extension is to provide the city with some time to study the West Side specific plan and other zoning regulations to address the occupancy of larger key tenant spaces within the 800 block of Laurel Street. In the meantime, during the 10-month, 15-day period, if a new use comes forward in the 800 block, they would apply for a conditional use permit, and they would be... processed in a timely way, and would, it would be brought to the planning commission. They wouldn't have to wait 10 months and 15 days to get before the planning commission. It would be done right away. Public notice was provided for the 10-month, 15-day extension. It's not necessary for the interim ordinance, but it was provided for this, uh, ordinance extension. And I thought I'd just provide just a little bit of brief background, um, because it's been, uh, a little bit of time since the city council considered this. There are several larger key tenant spaces in the 800 block of Laurel Street, and that's in the blue area you see on the right side of the screen. That's the 800 block of, of Laurel Street. And the current, there is current interest in one or more of the larger tenant spaces in the 800 block as a closeout dollar store, retail store. And this poses a threat to the land use and economic development opportunities in the downtown retail core. And prior to the 45-day interim ordinance, retail was a permitted use in, in the downtown retail core, and it still is, uh, with the exception of the 800 block. And that means that, that the city had no purview or discretion as to the appropriateness of any use that would come forward, uh, for some of these larger key tenant spaces. Since adoption of the, uh, 45-day interim ordinance, staff has been approached by a discount retailer to begin the CUP process and begin processing that application for a large space in the 800 block of Laurel Street. In conclusion, Citizens Committee efforts and economic development studies have documented the sustainability and the need for sustainability of an economic, economically viable central retail district. And allowing a discount retailer to occupy one of the large key tenant spaces in the downtown retail core is really a threat to the downtown retail enhancement and economic development opportunities. And so the recommendation, although the council, uh, can't move on it this evening, is to recommend that the council authorize extension of this, um, interim urgency ordinance for 10 months and 15 days. And that concludes the staff report. Now I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for Al?
I have one question, and that is, um, well, yeah, put it this way. Can you take us through when something like this would come before, if someone's coming through with an application, um, similar to what we just did on this, this last, uh, ordinance where we had findings? Would it be similar, that we'd have to have certain findings to either approve or deny an application?
Yes, that's right. As part of the conditional use permit, um, a staff report would be written, and, uh, findings of project approval or denial would be provided to the planning commission. And if it was a recommendation for approval, there would be certain conditions in addition to that. So yes, there would be findings of either denial or approval presented to the planning commission, uh, based on the merits and appropriateness of the use. So that would be a presentation, uh, to the commission, and the commission would need to, um, make a motion. The commission would also have the option of kicking that, uh, up to the city council for consideration as well.
And just one follow-up question, then. The findings would be based on, uh, in this case, both our general plan and the West Side specific plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
And also, you could bring in any studies that were done in the past by, um, advisory committees, um, any other regulations. So you could bring in a variety of documents and, uh, past work.
Okay, thank you.
And this will be a public hearing, Al, so that the public has the, the normal right to, uh, address either the commission or the council in terms of the applicant?
That's, that's right. It would be publicly notified, all the business and property owners within at least 300 feet of the property. We could do more. Uh, in a case like this, we, it might be a good idea to do a larger radius. And also, uh, we would put it in a newspaper of general circulation and probably in on the city's website. So it'd be widely, um, publicized prior to the public hearing.
All right, very good. Thank you. Now, if we can, uh, open the public hearing on this item, remember we're talking about the 800 block of Laurel. We'll be talking about the other aspects of Laurel next on the agenda. But at this point, uh, is there any public that would like to speak on this issue? And I think Robert Siskin had a, uh, slip in.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. I'm Robert Siskin. I'm owner of Siskin San Carlos Pharmacy at 825 Laurel Street. Uh, been, uh, running the pharmacy there for over 21 years, and I've seen a lot over that 21 years in the city, and I've had the opportunity to address you on many occasions. My main concern for being here tonight is the extended vacancy that's, uh, occurring where the former Bell Market was. And I have questions as to why the city of San Carlos has gotten to the point of spot zoning in the downtown. I have a number of questions here that I'd like to pose and hopefully get answers from you afterwards. What efforts were made and when were they undertaken by the city of San Carlos to encourage another market to move into the vacating Bell Market property? Who is the city's liaison in charge of interacting with property owners as vacancies occur? When was contact first made by the liaison with the property owner of the former Bell Market? When does the city deem it the right time to take a proactive role in seeking acceptable tenants and working with property owners and leaseholders to create a win-win outcome without the cumbersome city pos, uh, proposal, uh, that's in front of us? What is the current protocol of the city of San Carlos and Chamber of Commerce to attract desirable businesses into the downtown, and why isn't it working? What specific criteria is used to determine the acceptability or undesirability of a prospective tenant? And how is this conveyed to property owners seeking to fill vacancies? In section three of this draft ordinance, uh, it refers to the Public Health, Welfare, and Safety Code, section 658, 58A. And I'm wondering how the city council finds the public health, welfare, and safety threatened by the proposed tenant moving into the former Bell Market property? Specifically, what has been done by the council and Chamber of Commerce since the February 12th meeting to resolve the vacancy of the Bell Market? These are important questions, I think, that need to be addressed and, and, uh, direction that can be taken to avoid the spot zoning. I believe that the situation we find ourselves in tonight was totally avoidable. By being proactive and not reactive, the city council of San Carlos would be addressing other issues tonight. I feel that the zoning ordinance is too aggressive and detrimental to the health and welfare of the downtown by restriction of commerce. If you wish to attract, do not overact. This is not the way to encourage the vitality, growth, and desirability of our downtown. I urge you to vote down.
Just, uh, step to the podium and give us your name for the record, please.
I'm Frances Barnsley. I'm here as, uh, representative of Edward Barnsley's interest in the 810 Laurel Street property. I just want, I, there isn't a lot I can say tonight. I will tell you that we're working very, very hard to do something that's proper for San Carlos. We are bound by certain things we're finding we're having a lot of problems with. I have meetings coming up tomorrow. I don't know that anything will be, um, come clear out of it. We wanna see the best and highest, best use of that property made here. We would like, it is supposed to be a market, and we feel that another market should be in that property, too. And that's where we're trying to, trying to move right now. And we have people interested, more than one person interested, and very high-quality people interested. So I just want you to know, we're not sitting back, we're not, not doing anything, and we'll do everything within our power to do something appropriate for San Carlos. Okay?
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Barnesley. Thanks for, uh, enlightening us. Thank you for enlightening us.
Not much, but a little.
It helps. Now, could we have a little discussion on, uh, the questions, Al or Mark? I think, uh, I think some, some review of where we've been on the project and what we've done, uh, in, in terms of, uh, trying to steer it, uh, in an appropriate way would help.
I, I can probably just kick off by saying that the city has had an economic development manager, uh, on staff for, for a number of years. And, um, even though the, the one employee who has occupied that position most recently in a permanent status has gone to another city, and Mr. Brian Moore has assumed that responsibility for the city on, on that person's behalf. And so we do have an economic development program that, uh, has established a person on staff that, uh, is a liaison to the business community. We do, uh, meet with the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, we have had dialogue with the, uh, with the property, with representatives of the property owners as well as the applicants for, uh, the site at Bell Market. In addition to that, there were, uh, uh, efforts made, uh, I think by the, the leaseholder as well as the property owner to, uh, market the site to, uh, another potential market opportunity for that particular site. Uh, staff was aware of that, uh, and, uh, and I think we did have some healthy discussions in the staff level with respect to whether or not moving forward with an ordinance at this time such as this, given the, uh, most recent potential application was in the city's best interest or not, and decided to bring it forward because of the possible implications of that application.
Mm-hmm.
So that, that's somewhat of the background. Uh, we, we are, uh, proactive, I guess, to the degree that we can be. Certainly, though, we recognize that it is a, uh, it, it is a free market, and, uh, the, uh, there, there are limitations perhaps on the degree to which we can dictate in every, um, store location, which particular tenant might ultimately be located there.
Thank you. Al, would you like to add anything to that?
Um, not too much. Uh, in terms of the issue at hand, um, I started January 8th, in the first week that I started work here, uh, we were contacted by a discount retailer, uh, in the first week. So that's sort of what got, got the ball rolling on the ordinance itself, because, uh, staff identified a key issue in their downtown retail core, and that's, uh, we moved very quickly to get this issue, uh, up for council consideration. And, uh, just to clarify something about spot zoning, um, this wouldn't be considered spot zoning. It's, uh, state law allows for cities to, uh, enact urgency ordinances, uh, when you have, uh, an urgent need to do so. Um, this is not, a spot zoning is more where you, um, say you have a commercial, a big commercial area, and you plot down a single-family house zoning or residential zoning right in the middle of it, and you change it, and it's not consistent with your, uh, with what's going on around it. Um, this is, this action would be consistent with what's happening in the downtown, and it would be consistent with the, uh, economic development, um, plans and ideas that been, have been put forward by citizens advisory committees, by the redevelopment implementation plan, and also the city of San Carlos real estate market study by economic research associates. So these are all things that, uh, really would move forward, the idea of the interim ordinance. I don't really have too much more to add unless the council wants to, uh, has more specific questions.
Bob?
No, I just, maybe, I, I, it doesn't necessarily, I'm pretty much understanding of, of, uh, of what happened, and I, and I think, uh, Mr. Siskin's questions in general have been answered, but if they haven't been answered in specificity, then I, I'd like, you know, perhaps you could meet with Mr. Siskin and make sure that we go over each item with him to make sure that he, you know, that there's understanding on both sides of where the, the question and the answer is.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Are there any other public members who would like to speak on this issue? Anyone have a motion to close the public hearing?
Please.
Yes.
Keep it open. Um, Al? Just move the podium. I noticed the podium's been moved, I hear. Um, my suggestion is you continue it to the 26th, just in case there are other members of the public that wanna speak at the time of consideration of the ordinance.
Okay. So a motion to extend the public hearing until March 26th?
So move.
Second.
Uh, do we need a roll call, Christine?
No, we don't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this matter is extended till the 26th, and, uh, we now move to item, uh, 11A, which is, I'm sorry, 10A. Adoption of 45-day interim zoning ordinance requiring conditional use permit for all new uses occupying tenant spaces of greater than 2,500 square feet in the 600, 700 blocks of Laurel and the 1100 and 1200 blocks of San Carlos Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And on the map, uh, on the screen, this urgency ordinance would cover the areas, uh, at the center of the screen, yellow area, which is the 700 block, and the 600 block is the, the darker area there to the left of that. And then the green area along San Carlos Avenue is the 1100 and 1200 blocks of, of San Carlos Avenue. Uh, and as part of the initial discussion of the 800-block ordinance on February 12th, the council discussed the idea of extending the urgency ordinance down to the 600 and 700-block, uh, areas. However, it was, um, not legally possible to extend it that night. So staff agreed to bring it back for council consideration at the earliest possible time, and thus is before you this evening. And, uh, although the 800 block of Laurel Street is identified as an area of critical concern, as noted in the last presentation, there are also a large number of, not a large number, but, uh, a number of larger tenant spaces in the 600 and 700 block and also the 1100 and 1200 blocks of Laurel, of, uh, San Carlos Avenue. And these blocks are also considered part of the downtown retail core. And there are potential vacancies of significant buildings within the rest of the downtown retail core here, and therefore, the potential exists for a clearance-style, uh, discount retailer to occupy these buildings, uh, as demonstrated by their interest in the San Carlos marketplace. So there's an immediate threat, uh, in these areas as well, and, uh, and it's a threat to the retail enhancement and economic development opportunities in these blocks. So in terms of next steps, um, since the newly proposed interim zoning ordinance for these blocks is being proposed as a 45-day urgency measure, no public notice was sent out. Um, and if you continue it to the March 26th meeting, uh, staff would send out public notification for all these, I guess we, Mr. City Attorney, would we need to send out public notification for the 26th? If it's a 45-day urgency ordinance? I don't think so.
Uh, if you sent the notices out, it would simply be as a courtesy. It's not required.
So it'd be required for the 10-month, 15-day, uh, extension, which we would bring back on April 9th, uh, for your consideration. So we would do public notification prior to the April 9th meeting. So the recommendation here is to adopt a 45-day interim ordinance requiring a conditional use permit, uh, for the new retail uses occupying the, the larger tenant spaces in the 600 and 700 blocks of Laurel Street and also the 1100 and 1200 blocks of, of San Carlos Avenue. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for Al? I have a, just kind of a philosophical question. Tell me why we should get in the place of, um, of, um, free trade, uh, free market and, um, and provide a, you know, basically a limit in terms of what an owner can do with his property in, in these three blocks. I, I, I have a different feel for the other block. I think the scope of that project is such that we would be amiss to simply allow anything that qualifies as retail to come in, considering what we're trying to do in, in building our downtown and building our commercial core. But the others are pretty well filled out. They're not quite as, uh, well, they're not as large, obviously. So give me a little, uh, logic behind this.
Certainly. Vacancies in these larger buildings are, a lot of times, they're seen as, as catalysts for economic development opportunities in downtowns and, um, in land use opportunities. And And many cities decide that they do want to get involved in, in guiding what happens in their, in their downtown retail cores by using the use permit. This doesn't say that you can't, can't do something, it just says that the city would have purview. It's not like a moratorium where you would say you cannot at all go in. It's saying that now the city wants to bring it to a higher level of consideration. In terms of some background, there have been some committee reports in the past that support this kind of thing. And for instance, the City of San Carlos Downtown Citizens Retail Advisory Committee noted that larger prominent spaces should be made available to future preferred land uses. And so, there was an acknowledgement that there are some types of retailers in the marketplace that are more desirable for certain areas of, of your downtown and that could be in any city. Also, the people that talked about retail at that time noted that there could be a better or higher quality of merchandise in downtown Laurel Street. And also, it noted that there has been significant investment in the physical attributes of downtown with the new capital improvements to the roads and the, and the sidewalks and the landscaping and lighting. And San Carlos residents desire a more upscale retail offering, including things like hardware stores, upscale grocery stores, restaurants, and drugstores in the downtown. And, and also there was acknowledgement that there was a number of challenges needing to be addressed to improve the economic viability of downtown. And so, that goes back to the economic development plan that's being put together. And I guess from a philosophical standpoint, getting back to that, is it, it is within the community's purview to make that decision for the community and the, under the council's purview and the planning commission to make that kind of a determination based on the kind of community that you have and what you want to see in the future. So, it is within the purview of the city to, to guide the market.
Very good. Thank you, Al.
Follow-up question. Do you, the question I have is if we're going to put something like this in place ultimately that would stay and it's not, you know, not dealing with an emergency ordinance anymore, but we actually want in a, as a permanent means of, of review, that these larger tenant spaces would, would come under this. I, I suppose some of the items that Mr. Siskin has brought forward, then there's a level of importance that's raised there and we would, I suppose, expect more activity on the, on behalf of our city staff and perhaps the Chamber of Commerce to be more proactive in going out recruiting businesses and so forth. And also, you know, it ties into what this survey's all about, always staying in touch with the community, what do you want to see here, right? But you've, you've been at this game long enough, you know, not just your short time here at, at City of San Carlos, but with other cities. Can you speak to the, the actual effectiveness of that, of, of having somebody on staff who's going out and, and recruiting businesses and trying to bring them into town?
Well, from what I've seen in working with economic development in the City of Mountain View and Daly City and other cities, is that it's, it's extremely effective. And you start, it's a public relations point at the beginning, just letting people know that there's a point person, that there's somebody that they can contact within the city, that the city's business-friendly and is interested in working with, with businesses. And also, working very closely with the Chamber of Commerce, who already does a fantastic job working with businesses. So, there's that connection between the chamber and the city and there's better discussion and communication there as well. So, I've seen that it works very, very well. Just as a side note, as part of the strategic plan that you'll be looking forward to later this evening, one of the issues, items in there in the next six months is to hire the person that, that Mark had mentioned earlier, the housing and redevelopment person, who would really focus those efforts. And it's really, and take also the ideas that are in the economic development plan that are being developed for marketing the City of San Carlos to businesses, on taking a more active approach. And I've seen really, really positive results from doing that in other cities, really dramatic actually, results.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is not a public hearing, however, if any member of the public would like to comment, you'd be welcome to do so. Yes, Lou?
Tom, council members and staff. I, I just have a little reservation in regards to saying what you want to tell people to do with their properties. I heard this gentleman just before say, "We need hardware stores." We had hardware stores on Laurel Street, we had three of them. Home Depot one in, we have one. We had a lawnmower shop, we don't have any. We had a tool shop where Craigers is, Craigens is now, we don't have any. You know, I, and he's talking about restaurants, that, that's my favorite thing because the restaurants that you're putting along Laurel Street here, we have no parking. Where Mo's TV was over there, when I was involved in here, they were going to put the restaurant over there with no parking spaces whatsoever. At noon time, behind the Bank of America, when they have the restaurants along there, you can't get in for a parking space in a bank. There, there's things I think that you have to do to generate types of business that, that the people want in San Carlos here, but I, I think it has to be, I think it has to be something where, where there's a need, not something where, I mean, I, I think like Trader Joe's, I mean, you know, that, that's a great thing. Look at Trader Joe's, they're busy all the time. That, that I think was something that, that San Carlos needed. I, I just, I, I mean, I, I wasn't prepared to come up here and say something like this, but, but it just, being on the other side of the fence, being in retail and in commercial, I have property and I sure don't want people to tell me what I, what they want me to do with my property. I, I will try to rent it to people that I think is good for the town or good for me, but you know, you start talking about what's good for the town, may, may not be something where, where somebody can, well.
I think we hear you. Thank you very much for sharing. Anyone else? Then we'll, any other discussion? Then we will continue this matter until the meeting of March 26th and move on to the next item on the agenda, which would be item 9A. This is a consideration of adoption of our strategic plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. On Monday, February 26th of 2007, the city council met for the third time with the city manager and department directors to develop a strategic plan for the City of San Carlos. This plan covers a time period of February 2007 through this coming August 2007. During the strategic planning session, council and department heads reviewed the mission statement, core values, and three-year goals that were previously developed from the February and August 2006 strategic plans. No changes were made to these items. The council and staff then worked together to create 34 new six-month objectives, which support the five three-year goals that the, that the strategic plan developed previously. Those goals are to, one, increase economic development and sources of revenue; two, update the general plan and the East Side specific plan; three, maintain and enhance public safety; four, improve the infrastructure; five, enhance internal and external communication and customer service. Department directors are currently meeting with city commissioners, city staff to share and discuss the strategic plan. City manager will be holding several sessions this Thursday with city staff to go over items in the strategic plan so that everybody is aware of the objectives for the next six months. Beginning April 9th, staff will begin reporting monthly on the progress of this strategic plan. In addition, the strategic plan has been published on the city's website and is available to the public there. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Jeff? I just wanted to clarify one issue, Jeff. This is on the update of the general plan and East Side specific plan and item number five. And it talks about the community development director working with the natural resources task force and the flooding land use committee. That part's good. The next part, identify key aspects of the environmental management element of the future general plan is also good, but it doesn't quite speak to the full listing of activities that the task forces would like to pursue. And currently, I'm meeting with the subgroups of those task forces. We're going through their original recommendations, which was the, the large binder, recall, we, we got early on. And we're taking those recommendations down to a, a workable level over a shorter period of time. So, they're not general plan orientated, but they're more public information, the public education. They're, they're dealing with a better understanding of what we have, for instance, in terms of streams. And it's, it's taking the, I might just call them the non-general plan aspects of those reports and moving them into a, an operative process that can be accomplished over a shorter period of time. So, how you would put that in, I'm not sure, but if you can take some recognition to that, that's, there's more to what we're doing or to what the task force is doing than simply general plan issues.
Okay. We'll take your comments and we'll see if we can work something up and bring it back April 9th.
Very good.
With the monthly update.
That'll be fine. And we'll have reports coming back to you as to what course the task forces would like to take as the, the next months go on. Questions, any others?
Just a comment. Mr. Mayor, there were some items that we had discussed that had decided not to put in the matrix and it was said that those would be put as, just listed at the bottom as addendum items to make sure that we did, just not lose track of them. And I don't see them here.
Okay.
In fact, already, I can't remember what they were.
Yeah.
Which is all the more reason to have those there, but.
I believe one might be on page two, the last objective under increase economic development and sources of revenue, was just listed as a future objective without a date, so it's kind of in the plan.
Where is that again?
It's.
Page two?
Page two, increase economic development and sources of revenue goal, the very last item.
Through the chair while you're looking for that, I think the intent there was that the position that Al talked about earlier, the redevelopment and housing manager, would be on board after this six-month period and that was the reason that that objective was moved to future in the workshop. Although I will tell you that at least on the Wheeler Plaza discussions, Al and I have already been approached by people interested in that. So, if, if something comes up, we'll work on it, but the, the main push is going to be in the, your next six months.
Oh, future objective, I see. It's at the very bottom there on page two?
Yeah.
I get, yeah, I think that's the one. Unfortunately, Councilmember Doherty's not here and, and I remember during the discussion, it was an item she was, had concerns about. I believe that's it, though.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay. Very good.
Other questions?
No. Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion for this or?
Would you like a motion to adopt the plan?
Motion to adopt, yes.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt the City of San Carlos strategic plan that we talked about on February 26th.
Second?
Second.
Brokaw?
Yes?
Oops, sorry. Councilmember Brokaw?
Yes.
Mayor DePitt?
Yes. Next is item 10B, which is consideration of transportation and circulation commission Earlier on in the consent, we approved an ordinance creating the new commission and we have a request now to put seven people on the commission. These are all people that are either who are serving the traffic transportation commission or the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and they have all expressed a willingness to continue their service.
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval of the appointees as listed in the staff report.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
One question I have, because we did create a, a new committee by ordinance, we have to wait until that has had its.
Correct.
Full course. That's correct. Hearing, okay.
And the, the regularly scheduled meeting for this month has been canceled because of that, so that will be a part of it. Okay, now I think we are finished with the normal agenda. We move back into item 7H, which is authorization of the city manager to execute a contract with EIP associates for preparation of a focused environmental impact report for a proposed 20-unit residential condominium building at 665 Prospect Street for an amount not to exceed $57,100. I've had, I have three speakers who would like to talk on this issue and I believe they want to talk as the project relates to adjacent Pogus Creek, but we'll let them speak for themselves and I'll ask them to come forward. Michael Erbys, Lou Boris, and I believe Barbara Patterson would like to speak as well. You may go as you choose.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. My name's Michael Erbys, I'm resident of San Carlos and I'm just, maybe this is, well, it's new to me, I haven't done this kind of thing before, but encourage you to take a look at this project and take a look at this site if you're not intimately familiar with it. This is not a run-of-the-mill proposal, I don't think. This is a rather unique area that they are proposing to develop to the extent allowed by zoning, but it would take away from one of the last areas of the creek that is what San Carlos used to be a lot more of and what used to be a lot more along the creek as well. But you really should take a look at what's going to happen. If you think, look at what there's now and what's going to happen. I'm not a resident of Prospect Street, I would dread the prospect of being a resident of Prospect Street with this 20-unit condominium on a street that is already, I think, maxed out in terms of parking and access and there's, there's no turnabout at the end of the street. I can't imagine a 20-unit condominium plunked down there at the end either. But really, take a look at the natural habitat that will be destroyed by this, the trees and the wildlife and the, the creek bank is rather unique in that area. Anyways, I just encourage staff and, and yourselves to take a look at this maybe with a little fresh perspective or consider what it means, what San Carlos used to be and what we would like to keep it as much as we can. Anyways, that's all I.
Very good. Thanks. Thank you. Barbara?
Yes, I'm Barbara Patterson, I live in San Carlos. This project is one that we've kind of looked at, some of the creek interested people have looked at for the last year, actually. And we toured the site with the architect and the owners. And at that time, they indicated a great respect for the naturalness of the creek and so on. And, but at that time, I didn't know they were going to be putting in 20 units. This is a single-family home site right now. There is one home and then there's a nice open area full of oak trees and so on. And it borders the creek where it's very natural and a deer roam very easily. My understanding was that, well, as this developed, I realized, okay, 20 units, that's going to be 40 people and 40-plus cars who are going to be put into this, it's, it's the dead end of Prospect where it does, dead ends into Pogus Creek. So, I think it's much too dense. I'm surprised that all of the efforts that we put into our natural resources task force and our interest in preserving and restoring our watersheds and creeks, I'm really surprised that this project would be put in a consent calendar and they attempt just to slip it through. This is not just a routine thing at all. And I would, I would ask if, I know the package came out last Thursday for the meeting tonight, I'd like to ask if any of you have actually visited the site? I'd like to ask if any of you have actually visited the site?
I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe Barbara needs clarification. This is just an environmental -- this is just an environmental impact report that is a contract for an environmental impact report that's being considered. The staff did look at it and said, "Well, this might be an impacted site," and that's the reason it's going to a full -- I mean, or an environmental impact report as opposed to just going forward with a project. This project is not before the council tonight. It's not before anybody. It's just a contract to do an environmental review of the site, okay? Maybe there's a misunderstanding.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. In a sales presentation, a person always tries to get little yeses back before the big yes. This is not just a little yes, this is a big yes, and this is a turning point. Are we going to support this type of a project? If you vote yes for it, it will be just approving this. And I wonder if the city manager, who is going to be signing the contract, if he has visited the site also.
Well, I will say that, Barbara, the process here as the city manager related is one of further review and investigation of the proposal. If you read the staff report, the staff is well aware that this is a -- this site has numerous heritage and other trees that create an oak woodland, that the application is incomplete, but the repairing evaluation is being completed, and it has identified various biological and hydrological environmental impacts, and it has been found that the project may result in potentially significant environmental impacts to on-site oak woodlands. So I think we're doing exactly what you want us to do, which is to take.
Actually, not. There's no point. There's already a site plan completed on this. There's already a landscape plan completed, the scope of work, the riparian review has already been completed. That seems to be enough documentation for you to say, "This is not a project that we want to pursue." I mean, the city governs what type of cupboards people put in their kitchen. We could certainly step forward and take a different direction on this. Otherwise, our creek groups and our fluke group are just absolutely worthless.
Well, I would.
We just don't need to be spending our time.
I wouldn't agree with that.
With these meetings, if this is what the city's going to put forward.
I think the committee's done very high-value work, and it's raised a high-level awareness, much higher than before, to the status of our creeks and riparian woodlands.
I appreciate that.
But I do think that this is a project that can be developed. It's a project that can be developed to the scope it's been proposed. The applicant has every right to submit an application for what he can or she believes can be done with a site. The review process and the study process will determine what can actually be done, what the city is willing to do, but we're going through a methodical process that allows the investigation to continue, and I believe that this is the right way to do it.
But this process is going toward approval. This process is not an open, optional process.
It's not going toward approval any more than anything else goes toward approval before its time. You know, things have a process they go through, and this is the process you go through with development. At this point, I think you should applaud the process rather than fight with the process because this will get a better project ultimately. Something will happen on that site unless someone's willing to purchase it for parkland or something else. It will be developed in some fashion, and our intent is to develop it in the best interest of the city as well as the environmental conditions prevailing.
Yes, I can appreciate that. However, this is a point where we can decide, are we going to go forward to support this type of project? Because as this progresses to each step, it's much more difficult to reverse it because we get to the further step, and then the discussion will be, "Well, why didn't you stop it further back? Why has this kept on going?" And it is kind of unfair to the owners also if this is not something the city really wants to do. So these things ought to make a lot more sense. An illustration I'll close is the streams are like, you know, a valuable string of pearls. They can be worth many, many, you know, hundreds of dollars. A stream is worth millions of dollars, and if someone comes along and just starts smashing various beads in the string at various points, you've lost the value of it. And I'm afraid this is what happens when the creek is segmented into these projects that incrementally degrade the creek and the integrity of it. So thank you. I would appreciate if you would perhaps have a neighborhood meeting on this or perhaps delay this. But the other concern is EIP has not always done great work. They often will, you know, do things less than significant and try to slip things by to support the developer. In fact, on the Belmont Creek, they didn't even realize where the creek flowed to. They didn't realize it was a tidal area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Lou Boris?
My name is Lou Boris, resident of San Carlos, mayor, councilman, and staff. I'm just going to reiterate what Barbara said. I mean, I know this is not the type of hearing for that, but my main concern is I've been twice now to the desk trying to find out just how far this process has gone, and just in saying what Barbara said, that the different things have gone ahead, and my experience has been that, you know, it goes ahead and ahead and ahead, and then all of a sudden it comes to a point in one of the meetings here, and they say, "Well, you know, the person that has the property has put $300,000 in architectural fees and this, and they've got all these reviews, and they've had the impact studies, they've had everything done." And it's really unfair for us to turn them down because the thing is zoned for what they're asking for, and I realize that. But in this particular case here, I don't know what happened many years ago. I live at the end of Carmelita. Tom knows where I live, and in the back end there, we have those condos that we had a big fight where they had apartment houses, then they had like duplexes, and then they had the condos, which were like two stories there, which are, you know, right in my backyard, which is the creek. I mean, I could throw a rock and hit the things. My main concern is that if this thing goes forward, at the end of Prospect there, right across the street from the intended site that they're going to build on is a triplex there, and that triplex is virtually right in my backyard. Now, if they're talking about putting a three-story building there, if they're going to allow them to put a three-story building on the other side over there, I can't imagine that they wouldn't allow them to put a three-story building there. I'm not going to get into saying that, you know, when we bought our house, it was $26,000. I mean, I'm not going to say, "I bought a million-dollar house," and that's going to devalue my property, you know, and my value is going to come down. But, you know, like everybody else's house, it's gone up in value, and I'm sure that when they talked about before, when they were talking about those condos before, they were talking about a buffer zone. I don't know what happened to the buffer zone. In other words, going from a high-rise to a duplex or a fourplex and then something not so invasive right next to the creek, I mean, is my real concern. I mean, not only for myself, but for Mike. I mean, in his particular case there, you know, three bedrooms, they better put some high trees there because they're going to be looking right into his bedroom, and I think that's really an invasion of privacy. So I know that that's going to come up at a later time. I would ask that whenever this does come up, that they would inform. I wasn't even aware of this today, but I mean, I would ask because this is a really important agenda to us at area down there, that they inform everybody within 300 feet of any time that they have a meeting in regards to this particular project. Thank you.
And we'll make sure that's done, Lou. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Members of the council, any comment?
I do have some comments. One, I respect very much the fact that Barbara bird dogs these issues and saw to it that this was pulled from the consent calendar, so that there could be this discussion. I agree with Tom that the -- we don't have a right necessarily to stop a property owner from making application for a proposed project, and this is part of the process. As we allow that process to go forward, however, it's -- they are public hearings. I agree with this gentleman here who just spoke. It is incumbent upon us to do notification properly and to let people know that this project, however it comes forward, is discussed in a public manner and folks know about it. And by starting the process, it allows folks like us who are expected on behalf of the community to make decisions on things like this, and if we are inclined to, as I am, to protect creeks, you know, whenever possible, it gives us that opportunity to make that decision whereby we can protect the creek. As opposed to if this process didn't exist, property owner owns the property, he's got all property rights in the world and just goes out and does whatever they want, no one, you know, no one can say a word about it. All we're doing is starting that review process. It's not to say that any of us are in agreement with the project, or -- and in fact, I would respectfully back away from what the mayor said in terms of this will be developed, and I don't think he meant to say to the extent of the plans, but Tom is probably correct. It will be developed. To what extent it will be developed is yet to be seen, and that's what we're here for, and that's what our planning commission is there for, is to look at those plans and make decisions. And even on an EIR report, or in this case, a focused EIR, just because a consultant says something in an EIR doesn't make it gospel. We still have to make decisions on those EIRs, accept them, reject them, so forth. So again, all this is doing is starting that process, opening the door for that to happen. I would invite you, though, if you're strongly concerned about this, stay on top of us. We're elected officials. You have the right to speak to us, to pressure us, all you want. That's what the political process is all about.
Thank you. Any other?
I just, I would also like to echo Councilman Grokot's comments and also the mayor's comments. I was on the planning commission for six years. We had a number of projects coming before us. Some were approved and some weren't approved. I've only been on this council for a year and a half, and I know on the 26th, we're going to have an EIR review of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation. Now, someone mentioned that if someone spends $300,000, that people will say, "Well, gee, maybe they should get it because they spent $300,000." I think Palo Alto Medical Foundation has spent $2 or $3 million on their projects so far, and quite honestly, at least this council member, doesn't have an opinion on how that's going to go. And quite honestly, it doesn't enter into my thinking whether they spent $2 million or $2 on any of these projects. The project has to stand on its own relative to the benefit of the city and the neighborhood of what we did or what we have. I agree, as I said, with the other council members and the mayor, that quite honestly, we need to have an open dialogue on this and have to have reports so that people can come, as you folks did this evening, and I'm sure will again, to the planning commission when it hears it on their process in the future and when and if we hear it. And I really believe that this is not any kind of an attempt to get anything by anybody. It's something that needs to -- information that we need to have in detail from an outside party, and again, as Councilmember Grokot said, just because it's information doesn't make it gospel. But the more information we have, the better off we're going to be on making decision. Again, like I said, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that whether dollars are spent or whether dollars aren't spent on projects, whether it's to remodel someone's bedroom or whether to build a 20-unit building or to build a hospital, the dollars spent don't affect me one way or the other of how this is going to go. And I would vote for this this evening to get the process started, and I look forward to having a great public discourse on this project to make sure of what we have. I have walked on Prospect. I know that neighborhood. I know it's a very crowded place at the moment. I have not seen any plans. I'd be fascinated to see how 20 units are going to be there, especially on the parking side, because I'm not sure how they're going to do that. But again, I don't have the information yet. I need it to make an informed decision. So I think this is good that we're starting the process, and I hope that we will continue to discuss it to make sure that we can protect all the parts of the city for all the citizens.
And with that in mind, do we have a motion to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Mayor Davis?
Yes. Well, that brings us to the end of our meeting, and I want to thank you all for being here and contributing, and we'll adjourn and meet again on the 26th.